And meeting of the Milton School Committee. Please join me in saluting the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. School committee members, do we have any changes to this agenda this evening? Hearing done, we just accept it as written.
Move.
And we have no one signed up for citizen speak? Has anyone come in that wishes to speak? So, I will entertain a motion, excuse me, to approve the minutes of the January 12th, 2010 school committee minutes.
So moved.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor? It's unanimous, thank you. Ms. Gormly, your report.
Thank you Chairman Sheridan. I'd like to invite to the table the Milton High School Site Council led by Dr. John Drother, parent representative Rachel Shaner, and student rep- senior representative Jay Rosenberg. Won't you join us up here?
I'm always going to ask you to be there.
He's sitting here.
We could graduate him now.
Nice to get rid of him.
Milton High School junior.
Dr. Drother, if you could click there, we'll let you scroll through the presentation.
Jay, have a seat. Ms. Shaner.
So Jay, what have you learned being on the Site Council so far?
Just a few words that Dr. Drother said.
Oh, very nice.
Got him buffalo, don't you, Joe?
Welcome this evening.
Thank you. Always a pleasure to be here with you both. Hi guys. All right, I guess for some of what we've been doing and so on, of course, part of it is a school improvement plan with that, and I think we've talked here about scores. So, and the same thing in Site Council, we talk a bit about scores, about how we're making progress, you know, over the years in the ELA, in the math, we look at trends, you know, we've talked about them that, I guess, in recent, we continue to make progress, you know, but yes, we get towards, you know, reducing numbers of failures and needs improvement more and more, sometimes it becomes a little more difficult and we have little blips that we weren't quite as successful. So, we ended up looking at those. So, does it move? Okay. So, we look at our progress in English Language Arts and again, in math, and, you know, we've been fortunate that we've made progress, but we did recognize that we didn't make as much as far as the improvement that we need. So, that becomes a topic that we talk about in Site Council and ideas on how to impact teaching and learning like that. So, that becomes part of our school improvement plan. Now, some of this isn't, you know, this develops even over the summer with Superintendent Gormly in meetings in, before school even starts, so a lot of this is really pre-Site Council, but they become topics and information, you know, we really rely on our parents and student representatives to be, you know, also share the knowledge they have with others. So, in doing this, we have put into our school improvement plan a number of items, in particular related to, you know, state standards, how well we want to align those with our curriculum, you know, looking at our scope and sequence documents. Also, you'll find in here, there are, you know, because we're headed into October of 2011, a NEASC site visit, we're in the process of our self-study. So, woven into these also, you're going to see that we are looking at rubrics that measure our expectations of student learning. You know, 10 years ago, we had a set of expectations for student learning, and, you know, during the process of the 10 years and as we enter the next, we revisit them, we look at how our, how we're doing, are they up to date, should change and implement them, and then we adjust how we assess that related to our self-study as we approach that. Also here, you'll see where when we're looking at AYP related to MCAS, so these are all kinds of the nuts and boltsy kinds of things of where we have also included our EPPs. Now, for students that-
Can I stop you for a minute? I actually got a comment from someone last, after our last meeting, if we could please describe what the, all the acronyms are that we use. So, AYP is adequate yearly progress, and if you could just do that throughout your presentation, that would be helpful, thank you.
Sure thing. You know, the EPP is an educational proficiency plan. Students that pass MCAS but are still in the needs improvement category, in the retesting that is there for them to pass, there is not a provision for them to move into the proficient or advanced categories. The state still wants to see progress made for, so for those students, we track them with an educational proficiency plan. It's a coordinated effort that involves guidance in each of departments, English and mathematics, where we look at a student's scores, how they scored, so they passed, but they still are in needs improvement. So, you track what courses they take over the years and how well they perform in, in those courses. In particular, we try to target how well do they do on a test like the, you know, midterms that we just had or the final exams. So, those are what we work on and we kind of developed mostly over the summer, like I said, with Superintendent Gormly and the, you know, time that we spent as, you know, with departments and the other educational leaders to do that. But also down here is that we are attentive that we did not make AYP, so we're very focused on that this year to say, and look at and analyze what students, it's like crystal ball you need a little bit because they haven't had the chance to take the 10th grade MCAS yet. That's where AYP is determined, so we want to look and we've had a series of meetings that look with, at each of the students over their progress during ninth and in this beginning part of 10th grade to just have the teachers informed, so, you know, they should know who the students are and what their needs are, and keep in mind the MCAS test coming up, so we're looking to keep that as tight as possible, that our, you know, preparation for the MCAS is there. And if somebody's struggling, we try to be proactive and get them into an MCAS review before the test rather than after the test. Ms. Mary.
So, the EPPs are for students as they come into the high school? So, if someone's been identified in eighth grade as needs improvement or failing in a particular subject, is that when the EPP takes?
No, the EPP will take place after 10th grade.
After 10th grade.
Yeah, our attempt in planning, you know, that we're increasing is looking at who our most risked students are before, but then afterwards, even if, again, the state set 240 as their benchmark to pass and become in the proficient category, but through retesting, you know, when you take the retest for MCAS, the best you can score is needs improvement. You know, it was, it was built as an exam to just say, oh yes, the student did pass, didn't solve the needs improvement problem.
Got it.
Problem. So, the educational proficiency plan addresses the needs improvement issue.
And is that an interaction with the state? Is the state actually aware of how many EPPs a particular high school has and follows that throughout, or is that just something that they're recommending that we do?
Well, they could audit us on it. I mean, we have them for all our students, that hasn't happened, but, you know, that-
So, they don't ask for a particular report or anything like that on EPP?
No, they haven't done it.
Ms. Gormly?
And to that point, for Dr. Drother, Dr. Drother sat us down, and I've been in on the meetings with the English and the Math Department head and reviews the names of every student, students following from the eighth grade who have failed their MCAS, students who are identified because of their grades, teachers identified students, and they match every student and make sure in some form, is it Saturday morning MCAS, is it the MCAS in school, is it English support, where is their level, and it always reminds me, it gives significance to no child's left behind, who's contacting the homes if the child's not coming on Saturdays or after school, and to really track, to make sure that every student is getting the support that they need.
So, that's part of that. On our next one, we do have, you know, with NEASC coming up, this is one that we're in progress of this year. It is one of the expectations of NEASC when they come to judge us, that we have a program to provide an adult, other than the guidance counselor, who takes a personal interest in the well-being and performance of each student. We're looking towards using our activity period in coming up with a curriculum to use with the students so that in addition to the regular guidance meetings, there's someone that they're meeting with on a weekly basis that will do check-ins and say, how you doing, and, you know, be able to answer questions that students might have and so on like that. We have not launched this yet, but this one right here is one that we're working on for, you know, this year and into next year.
Mr. Hubin?
Ms. Shaner, as a parent, how involved do you think the parents would be in this type of initiative? It sounds like that this would encompass quite a deal of time for a parent to invest. What are your thoughts on this type of program?
Well, I think, it's always a cha- you know, parents have all different levels of involvement, so, and especially in high school, it gets even more challenging. So, you would hope you'd have that partnership with the parents.
But it sounds like, you know, you, Dr. Drother, you talked about making sure they check in and, and speak with each and every student. That, that sounds like a very lofty goal, I mean, it's-
Yeah, it is, and it's something that, you know, we're trying to find ways of making that extra time. Now, I know we've used parents as mentors of students and things like that in the past at times, that becomes pretty challenging, both on a parent's schedule and so on, so when we're talking about this, some schools will do different models, when they're talking about adult, other than a guidance counselor, they're talking about every teacher in the building, even office staff or things like that, that everybody takes some people under their wings, so to speak. And I'll say that, you know, as our, you know, as our superintendent Gormly has done this with numerous students coming through in the past and has given them that personal attention. So, if everybody has a small group of students to look at after, you know, it's increasing it. Whether we could use parents in that role or not, I think that's one, you know, when we get to it, we hope that we're going to draw hundreds of parents in on our next initiative here, so, you know, you know, this one's kind of on us, we'll say, and we'll go on to that next one. So, you know, those are kinds of things that were in place a bit, but I'd like to say, you know, I enjoy the input of the Site Council, and great many ideas of things that have happened over time have come because of ideas that parents and students have brought to the table. You know, a couple of them, these are ones that are from, you know, they're also part of the school improvement plan, the things that we have done and that have evolved, you know, through input in the past from Site Council that we are continuing to do, such as the three-week look ahead, you know, making sure that our lines of communication are good. One of the things that we've gone to this year that has come up, you know, in previous Site Council has been, you know, the emailing of report cards and progress reports, we're really trying to go green here. The good thing about that is it, it happens in a much, in a more timely fashion, it gets them out quickly, and it saves us a lot of postage when we do it, so.
It also, it also makes sure that the parents actually see them.
There's no mailbox to rent at home. Okay, so, these, but, you know, so this year, I'd say, I'm going to stop talking some because I think that the most important thing that we bring to the table today are the ideas that have been generated with parents and with students and so on, and they become, to me, they're invaluable. There's always, you know, great insights to be had and so on. So, one of our initiatives this year-
Okay. So, yeah, one of the things that we're talking about on May 25th is Career Day. So, that gives people in the community, parents, and actually everyone that, you know, anyone that you know that can come in and speak to the students on their, you know, how they got to where they were, what kind of education, and a lot of times, people take varied paths to get where they are. But it's, it benefits the students and it's a great way for people to get involved in the school. So, we're also hoping, similar to Pierce had a very successful Career Day, and also hoping that it will lead to internships and possible employment for students because we want them thinking beyond the academic walls. And that also brought up another thing that we talked about was a personal finance course because we, a lot of times, we'll talk about meeting the diverse learning needs of all the kids because they're, you know, we thought that personal finance is something that everybody can use, including us. So, that was just an example of something, after we looked at all the current program studies, which is, you know, really good when you look at all the things that are offered, but we did think that that was a good addition that everyone could benefit from.
So, if anybody here is free on the 25th wishes to talk about a career or so on, we'd be very happy to add you to the list. But the idea too is that the Site Council parents will reach out to neighbors or friends or people they know, and we hope you get just a great variety. You know, the more options our students see, the better off I think all would be.
Dr. Drother, can you tell us on what day of the week, May 25th is?
Tuesday.
A Tuesday? And what would the time commitment be? Would it be in the morning, an hour or two hours or?
Yes, it'd be in the morning, and it'd be a couple hours. The, we're still looking for keynote speaker, we would kind of, you know, you know, sometimes if anybody has a connection there, we'd be happy to hear that too. But then after that, students will go to classrooms and, you know, a particular presentation would be made, maybe it's in the area of healthcare. Well, there's so many different occupations here, so we kind of group them that way that you could have physical therapists or radiologists or, you know, nursing or EMTs, so we try to provide that variety under a particular umbrella of, you know, top, a topic that students can go in and listen to.
So, on your website, would you have a place where people could sign up on the Milton High School page or contact information? Just send an email to you directly? I'm just trying to get you some help here and-
No, I don't have it on the website yet, but we will see that it gets up there, and then you can always call a Site Council parent.
Great.
Okay.
What we've also done on the Site Council is we've reviewed the class sizes, not within just a certain grouping, but of every student within all ages and all rankings throughout the school, and we've thought of ways to reduce these class sizes by either taking advantage of things that we aren't fully taking advantage of, or by utilizing different aspects that we hadn't utilized before. And what we brought up was something called a lab assistant or a TA, teacher's assistant. Right now, the lab assistants exist within the Science Department, allowing a student, junior, senior, to take a period off and to help the science teachers prep a lab, help them teach, or they could even do just meaningless irons, go check my mailbox, whatever needs to be done, it gets done. And not only does it reduce class sizes by taking the juniors and the seniors out of the loop and allowing the juniors and the seniors to have smaller classes, but if it also condensed one class size down for the juniors and seniors, it could create a new class for the sophomores and for the freshmen, allowing their class sizes to go down as well. But that's not where the extended help stops there, because it provides the teachers with a resource to get more done. They no longer have to take attendance, spend two minutes doing that, they no longer have to go grab the copy from the copy machine because they forgot it, which does happen a lot. So, from there, we can provide the teachers not only with the help of having someone in there to help keep classes in control if that's an issue, keep classes in touch if someone's struggling a little behind, the TA can take a little private time with them, bring them back up to speed, or even just give homework help or any help that's necessary. In the math and science departments, the TAs would be working for the departments, going to teachers as they are needed, but in what is looking to be all the other departments, they would work under one teacher specifically while he or she was teaching the class, and be assigned to help that specific class, and that the TA would be getting critiqued by the teacher, but not only just being critiqued, but also critiquing the students and helping the students along. All in all, the TAs would really be able to take away those classes that juniors and seniors just take to fill up space, and would give those classes to someone who really needs them, like a sophomore or freshman, maybe even kids that are struggling. We could improve their quality of education at the high school without having to take it away from someone. If anyone, if anything as well, we could also help for the future, because a lot of kids that are in tomorrow's teachers or child study wish to be teachers, and this is another resource for them to do it and take a step forward into what they hope to be their future, maybe even up back at Milton High School, as some of our teachers are our own graduates.
Yeah, so, this is, you know, these ideas of directions, additions to program of studies and things are all coming from, you know, the parents and students and community members on the Site Council.
Ms. Bethany Jones?
Does that start or it's going to start?
The lab assistants exist right now. Right now, I am one of the lab assistants, but starting next year, teacher's assistants will exist in all categories as long as they're signed up for. The issue we have right now is marketing and recruitment. What we need to do is we need to hope that when the guidance counselors go around, the class has been well enough marketed that kids are willing to sign up for it and understand that not only are they going to get honors credit for this, but it's only half, half a year, one semester course they're giving up. So, it's a big thing. And then I've also been talking to some people who I feel are qualified for the program, and I've been suggesting it for them, inquiring as to what they're like and saying, hey, when the teachers go around, they do the course recommendations for next year and you sign up, don't forget to look into this. So, our real big goal next is to do a lot of recruiting and a lot of marketing, so it doesn't just go over people's heads, so it's actually utilized and it becomes a strong resource to the high school.
That's great.
But for students that might be gifted in art or music, to have them helping other students and sharing their talents is a, is a great thing.
And to this point, discussing with the school committee, the enrollment in the elective offerings. So, when we're looking at the budget later, we're looking at core teachers, and again, I was going to share this later, Dr. Drother made an appointment to see us the other day, and for the second semester, for the second half of the year, he had 29 students who the electives were all filled. And so, he actually, you know, had to, the guidance had to meet with individual students, so a program like this, similar to last week when we recognized the two young men who were topping their class, one of them had been a tutor. So, he, one of his electives was working with, as a tutor, in a class with a teacher. But this would, again, to the expanse of it, as Jay said, would really alleviate some of the overcrowding we have in the electives, and it's a half a year course. So, I applaud you.
The way this is structured is if there is an issue like that, it's so easy to get into the program, the student could literally go to the teacher that they wish to study under if it was anything other than math and science, if it was math or science, they could go to the department heads and say, hey, listen, this is my situation, everything else is blocked, I would love to do this, and from there, they could be signed off and they'd be doing their assignment, and we wouldn't have access time, we wouldn't waste time having to run around trying to find something for the student, as this would be easily accessible. And there's really no limit to how many people can take this. The issue is we have to make sure those people are well-qualified, and the main thing that makes someone qualified isn't their skill, it's their effort, because some of the best artists can draw some of the worst drawings, and some of the best effort putting forth practicing musicians can sound absolutely horrible and ear-screaching, but as long as the effort's there and they're, and they're being productive and they are helping, then it's a good point for the course, it's a good point for the school especially, and it's a good point for the community overall.
And I think the people who worked for Ms. Polansky, she's a taskmaster, so I think that they ended up to be actual lab assistants.
She does organize us very well.
Thanks, Jay.
Department heads would oversee, you know, the whole program.
Right.
Excellent.
Great.
Thank you.
Do we get to ask questions? Do we have any other questions?
Yes, I'm sorry, I was waiting. So, am I right when I look at your data that it's steadily going up in English Language Arts and Math, our scores, steadily?
Yeah, we've been steadily increasing the number in advanced and proficient, steadily the number in failing has gone down.
Right.
We've wobbled a little in the needs improvement category. So, we've been making progress, but we did, again, not make AYP with respect to our subgroups, so.
But, so the number of kids who are in needs of improvement or failing, you have percentages here, and I don't think I can see with the tiny little print if there are numbers.
Oh, no, I didn't put the exact number of students on that, but, you know, the number of students that are in those categories is down to about a dozen students, you know, that are in the failing.
Okay.
And in math, maybe a little bit more between failing and needs improvement, there might be 20 students, so.
Okay. I just wanted to get a sense of the numbers versus the percentage, and then I know, I really appreciate as a high school parent, your three, the three-week look ahead, and especially because it's been so consistent, so I know it's coming and I, you know, okay, I got to look at that, and the newsletter has been great, the electronic sign-ups for the conferences has been great.
Yeah.
I mean, it's, it's really been a great experience at the high school.
Well, that electronic signup for the conferences came way back years ago. I don't know if anybody goes back to the original days of trying to sign up for conferences in the old high school, the old building and so on, which used to be complete mayhem, as it were.
Spent a long time waiting in line, Dr. Drother. His dad was-
You know, and a parent said, no, you got to find a better way, so we tried to centralize it in the office one year, and that just swamped everything there, and then, you know, it costs a little bit, but it's, I think it's worth it, you know, just the convenience of parents. But those are the ideas that the Site Council, you know, and these that we have this year that we take forward to become just part of the school.
Can I just, one more thing?
Sure.
When I'll stop. I know I've heard some from, some eighth grade parents where they're anxious about, well, how will my kid get oriented and when will that be, and the earlier that could be advertised, I think would be really helpful, so that the kids know in eighth grade, before school ends, when they're coming back for some type of orientation, versus finding out in the summer.
Okay.
As a parent of an eighth grader, I know that that would be helpful.
Generally, two, right? June and August?
Well, you know, the, the big thing before school is our big push.
Right.
The, and I don't know, the, the senior mentors, we send out those students who'll go down to Pierce and talk to the eighth graders also.
Right.
You know, so we do those couple outreaches, but, you know, we'll try to get the word out. I know my own kids always thought that summer was supposed to last forever, so we should know that. We should get the word out and before they, you know, get into the summer.
And many of these things you're talking about, Dr. Drother, I know from being on Site Council years ago, have come through the Site Council, just as these ideas you're suggesting now, the welcome back, the senior mentors, I mean, there are so many wonderful things that happen every day now, like you say, at Milton High because of the work that comes through the Site Council, so. Did you want to say something?
Yeah, a different topic, you mentioned the NEASC visit coming up. That has to be a, a bit of a nightmare to get all that material together at the same time of doing all this, because you have to prepare all sorts of dossiers for every class. I guess NEASC is, their rubrics these years, this year is really big into assessment and collecting student samples of good, medium, and poor work for every course. and collecting student samples of good, medium, and poor work for every course, on every test, for every standard. Have you got a barn somewhere for all this?
Well, we're fortunate enough, and, and because when we start rewriting and changing things, it causes the whole process to start to be recreated. We're in that process now. We're fortunate that instead of, 10 years ago, it was in the spring of oh-one, which would have been next year, but they bumped us into the following year. So we have all of next year to finish. You know, so the rest of this year and all of next year. So I think with the timeline that we're working with, we're going to get there. You know, and we already have our, our committees formed and each of the self-study committees have been formed.
To that point, would you, to the viewing public who don't understand what NIESC is and what it stands for, would you explain?
NIESC is the New England Association of Schools and Colleges. It's a voluntary accrediting, um, agency. We are a member of NIESC. It is a choice that we belong, um, because everybody pretty much belongs, helps with the choice being made. But, you know, they set every 10-year decennial review, and you go through a self-study where they put very exacting high standards on something. It's like standing in front of the mirror and saying, is everything perfect? You know, and in reality, no, but you, you, you try to achieve almost perfection in it because they're saying, you know, is everything in place for everybody, which is the standard. That's the gold standard that we seek to achieve. That's our goal for every student, you know, so in every course at a, attacking higher order thinking skills and so on and that. So to do the process, there are seven standards that are set. Um, one is on like mission, belief, and expectations. Then there's one on curriculum, one on instruction, one on assessment. And then there's a standard on, um, community, uh, support for, um, education. Um, there's a standard that, I'm drawing a blank on the name of it, that does, you know, just building facilities and things like that. And kind of then a leadership administrative program, you know, how a process is run. So there's a committee that's formed, and the committees are made up of, of the teachers and, um, some parents too, and some students. I don't know if we have any students here on them, but we've had, and we've got, we have students on each of the committees too. And they will take, from NIESC, they'll take the standard and read what the goal is, and then they're, NIESC puts out indicators. They say indicator one, do you have this, you know, and describe it and so on. So you have to then go and say, do we have it? To what standard do we have it? You know, what level do we have it? And so on like that. So that process is ongoing now and will be going on for the rest of this year and into next year. So it takes a while. And then from that, we write us out a report that gets passed by the whole school and sent to NIESC. And then when it's, then a committee of educators comes with our self-study to examine the school from what we said this is where we believe we are, and, you know, they'll interview everybody, parents, students, they follow students, and, you know, we'll write their report then. Yeah, it's long and grueling.
And so the visiting team will have individuals from the organization, but Dr. Droder and several teachers. We've encouraged teachers and department heads to serve on these teams, so they go out for a week and they visit a community, and they live in that community, and they serve as a member of the team, and it's grueling.
It's a lot of work. Yeah, you just work all day, you know, till 10 o'clock, 11 o'clock at night.
And write each night.
Because the visiting team has like four days to write their report too. So if you serve on a visiting team, you have to take all the work that everybody's done for two years and put it together and write a report in four days. It's not a small job. But it's very beneficial to serve on one of those. You know, again, it's, it's, it's like this, we always strive for the, be the absolute best, you know. But do we have enough money to fund everything and do everything and every program that we want and everything? No. But we do pretty darn good, I think. And that's, that's good.
We agree. I just want to say one other piece that's in your strategic plan that you didn't talk about that's important for people to know is the curriculum review teams that are ongoing um, in ELA, Science, Social Studies, and the Fine Arts, so.
Yes, thank you.
Great. Any other comments or questions?
Great job.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Rachel. Thanks, Jay.
Briefly to conclude my report, I wanted to, um, thank the Special Ed PAC for attending our last meeting and report back to you that tomorrow night I have a meeting with the PAC leadership to set up a series of meetings to address, um, the issues that were brought up, and I'll report to you further, um, after our initial meeting and future meetings with them. A reminder to the public, this Thursday night, 7 o'clock, Winchester Auditorium here at Milton High School, Kindergarten Information Night. Uh, a week from Thursday, which would be February 4th, again, 7 o'clock, Winchester Auditorium at Milton High School, First Grade Information Night. Um, I've been asked by the Milton High, uh, Milton High School boosters for you to remind, to remind you to circle on your calendars. February 12th, the Friday night, uh, backed by popular, uh, acclaim, uh, the boosters will be hosting a comedy night at the Who's a Club. They, uh, John Phelan assisted last year in the planning of that event, and the boosters, um, wanted the public to circle that date on their calendar. Also, uh, we've gone over and shared with you over the past years, either funding from the state or funding from the Copland Foundation and how, or the Title I funding at Tucker School, how successful, um, the extended day, the Saturday programs have been. At last, uh, November's Celebration for Education, sponsored by the Milton Foundation for Education, over $7,000 was raised as seed money to pilot and to help us, um, go into the planning stages and implement a Saturday program, a very clever idea by Assistant Superintendent John Phelan to bring fourth through seventh graders to the P S site. So again, cost effective, not having five satellite programs. So we're having initial meetings and, uh, we're looking to, uh, send out to parents for a small fee supplemented by this money that was raised at celebration to, uh, put a Saturday program into place after February vacation. So that's very, very exciting, a combination of enrichment and, um, and, uh, work for students who need work in English and Math. Uh, I want to report that, uh, four times a year, I chair a meeting of the heads of the public and private and parochial schools in Milton, and it's very beneficial. Over the years, we've found out, um, you know, we didn't know one another, and we had to network or we'd talk on the phone. So we've come together and we had our third meeting. Todd Bland, the new head of Milton Academy, uh, invited us to Milton Academy. We traveled to a different site each quarter. And our speaker was, uh, Richard Wells, the, our police chief, and he brought Sergeant Richmond and Lieutenant Detective West. And it was, uh, the guest speakers really come out of the discussions, and there were issues around security in our schools and sharing, um, ideas. And so, um, again, our police chief and those offices did a phenomenal job. And, uh, again, we all came away, uh, with, uh, increased knowledge and, um, an understanding. And again, the Milton Police Department, as I introduced, uh, the offices, I said it's an unbelievable partnership with the Milton Public Schools. And, um, they, uh, they work closely with us and really, um, protect, um, your public's children in our public schools. And, um, they're a wonderful resource. Uh, I want citizens to look in their mail. Uh, the new adult, uh, Milton Public School Adult Education brochure went out. And a special reminder to the parents of high school students about that SAT prep program. Um, a very, uh, cost-effective program taught by individuals that teach at Milton High or who have training in SAT prep.
Mr. Hughan, you have a question for Ms. Gormley?
Two, uh, two things, actually. Um, as part of your update, could you, uh, we're probably midway through the winter sports. Uh, could we have an update on how the winter sports are doing, uh, in the future?
Absolutely.
And the second thing is, I know we're all aware of the, um, the earthquake in Haiti and the devastation that that country has, has seen. Um, I'm sure most of us are aware that Boston is the, uh, number three concentration of people from Haiti in the United States, and Milton bumping up against Boston. I'm sure we have, uh, quite a few here as well, uh, in Milton. Um, how is the Milton school system, um, handling any, um, people from Haiti that are coming into our school system as far as, um, documentation, registration, um, and accommodating these people so that, um, they can be educated if, um, they, um, fulfill all the requirements?
And so you're speaking to victims of, um, the, of the tragedy in Haiti?
That's correct, yes.
Um, if I might, I'd like to turn that over to John Phelan, our Assistant Superintendent, who, um, just today was talking with, uh, the Department of Education on just that topic.
Thank you.
Um, Chris, you are correct. We do have, uh, a great population of, um, families that we work with in the town of Milton, um, that are from Haiti. Uh, we did anticipate as a district that that may be an issue with families bringing family members, uh, from Haiti to the United States and the Boston and Milton area. So we did reach out to the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education, uh, yesterday and today to try to come up with some, uh, formal process for accepting students, uh, in families that may not be traditionally able to enroll in school, uh, if it be for a short time, or moving in with family members for a short time, uh, due to the circumstances, uh, from, uh, where they live in Haiti. So we haven't gotten a response from that, but we have had, uh, several families already contact us with those circumstances. So we look forward to supporting and helping those families, and just want to make sure that we are doing so by, uh, the state rules and expectations in terms of custody and, um, uh, all those liability issues being resolved, uh, as we provide those services to the students.
Any other questions for Ms. Gormley? I, I have one question about the Saturday program. Do we have a sense of how many children will be, how many openings or spots there will be for children to participate?
No, but at our next meeting, uh, which will have simultaneously to the registration going out, I'll give you an outline. And again, it's going to be, um, a fee, and there'll have to be so many students that will be, will have to sign up for a particular course to run. So I'll give you all of those facts at our next meeting. It's in the planning stages now with members of the Milton Foundation for Education as parent reps and MFE reps serving with teachers and administrators.
So it's not just a, an academic support, there are enrichment opportunities as well?
Very, very exciting.
Yes, it is. Okay. Anything else, Ms. Gormley? Okay, for my report, um, I'd ask people, school committee members to look at our draft, um, calendar, which is not really the 76th draft. It's really just the seventh draft. But, um, we have scheduled a meeting for February 23rd, and that probably will be during our special town meeting. Um, and scheduled for that night, we have budget and the foreign language review. So I just wanted to get approval from the school committee that if, in fact, we are still in special town meeting, that we will push that date, uh, those items to the March 2nd date. Any other?
What happens if we're still in town meeting on March 2nd?
On March 2nd. Now, that might be a challenge. But we do have the, um, ninth open, because we are meeting on March 16th for our open budget hearing, but, um, so, okay. Any other changes to this? Do we have a motion to accept this as edited?
Removed.
Second. All in favor? Thank you. And also, I would like to ask, um, Ms. Gormley to invite our newest, um, elementary math coordinator and kindergarten to eight technology director, Holly Concanon, to come to one of our meetings so that we can put a face to her name. And I've heard glowing reports, um, from her previous, uh, people that she worked with previously, as well as, um, the great work. She's hit the ground running here in Milton, so I think it'll be fun to meet her and, um, get to know her a little bit. Thank you. Mrs. Kelly, could we hear the report of the Finance Subcommittee?
We can. Um, so the topic tonight is the FY11 budget. And we do have specifics that we want to get into, but before we do, I guess I would like to sort of set a backdrop. Um, the first thing being that we are a school system that, even though we had an override last year, had to cut positions. We have AYP issues at four individual schools. That's up from two schools the previous year. So we have academic challenges and we have financial challenges. And as we look forward to next year's budget, unfortunately, the financial picture doesn't get any better. And, um, the administration has worked long and hard, uh, with very tough choices, trying to figure out, how do I look at a budget for next year and make cuts where really there isn't room to cut? And I commend them for their efforts because they've really tried to approach it from the perspective of taking, uh, of staying away from classroom, cutting classroom teachers as much as possible. So I, I guess I'd like to turn it over to the administration to present first, sort of the overview of the big numbers, and then to get into the specifics of, um, you know, what exact positions have we identified thus far that would have to be cut if, if we were to be level funded? And then I, you know what, maybe before we start, should we start with sort of the backdrop of, um, of, Glenn has been having conversations with the warrant, at least one warrant committee member, and some of the financial picture has been shifting. So maybe we can have him set the stage as to where we're at as, as of this moment, from, uh, our communication with the warrant committee.
Sure. Um, the issue has been that the, the exercise here was to present a level dollar budget scenario to the warrant committee, getting no more dollars than we currently have. And the reasonable question to begin with was basically, what is that number? Because we started the year with one number. The October special town meeting decreased it by $110,000. The governor has proposed a, a round of nine C cuts which have not been, um, authorized by the legislature and which even he is saying he may not need to make all of. The warrant committee was proposing a, um, a holdback at the February town meeting of a number larger than that, just in case there's a second round of nine C cuts. And so the first issue is it really wasn't clear what the baseline is that we were working on. And it's becoming more and more apparent that, um, no one is terribly sure about what that baseline is. Because, um, as I say, the, uh, even the, the governor's proposed, uh, mid-year cutbacks from, um, December haven't happened yet, and it's not clear to what extent they will. The word in the legislature from, uh, not only from our local delegation, but others that we've talked to, seems to indicate they don't expect to make further nine C cuts this year. They expect the one round will be enough. Now, that may be wishful thinking, but that's what everyone seems to be saying at this point. And with that in mind, um, my conversations as recently as this morning, um, suggested that the, what we should be using for the level dollar figure is our appropriation for this year less the amount that was, um, uh, removed at, at the October town meeting, and just that much, and not, um, trying to speculate on what might or might not happen at a February town meeting. So from that perspective, we originally had approved $33 million and change, 33 million and 86, and we've lost 110,000. So our level service budget is really a 32,976,000, 32 million, 976,000 dollar budget. And so the exercise that we're working at here is, how do we get to that number from our original budget proposal for next year, which was roughly 35 million and a little? That probably frames it.
That's really helpful, Glenn. Thank you.
Thank you, Glenn.
So Mr. McCallis is going to begin our presentation and, uh, bring you through the numbers that Mr. Pavlichek just outlined.
Okay, we're looking at, uh, at our step one here of the original appropriation, 33 million, 86,000. And, um, that's the number that included the 1.3 million dollar override from the year before. In October, at a special town meeting, uh, the town voted to reduce the appropriations, not just for the school department, but for other town departments. And that assessment to the school was 110,591 dollars, giving us the new revised budget of 32 million, 976,000 dollars. And that's what we've been working off of. And that's what we've been working off of this year. And so far to date, we're still living within our budget and project to do so for the rest of the year. Step three, you know, we've been looking at this since November, when these discussions came up, as to what the potential cuts could be at the town meeting. And after a discussion with Glenn this morning, and after the governor's budget, governor's budget preview came out Friday afternoon, where he gave out the local aid numbers that showed we were going to keep our SFF, State Fiscal Stabilization Fund money, which was initially thought to be one-time money, on top of the Chapter 70 money, we'd be getting the same state revenue as we got in FY10 as to FY11. So that was essentially good news for the school department, because we were, like many folks, just a few months ago, thinking that all hope was lost, and we were going to, you know, be really taking a big step backwards in the revenue picture, while our expenses, you know, in general, would be growing forwards. So now, just in between step three and step four, you know, the original budget with the override, less the appropriations, the October town meeting, and the new starting point of $32 million. Well, step four, we get into what is a level service budget. What does that mean? That means we maintain the same level of service we have this year, next year. So whatever services we're providing now, we want to provide next year. If class size is, I'll use the number 26, we want to have a class size of 26. So we carried forward all the staff we had, and we added four teachers for AYP and class size issues. And those teachers were going to be distributed based on the results and progress that was being made this year, into the areas that felt needed the most help and where we could best reallocate the resources of the staff we have. Because each year, everything changes, we start anew, and sometimes class sizes change between the grades, and sometimes we can shift staff to address class size that way, as well as with the new teachers. So we're looking at, how do we get to a level funded budget, which was the challenge from the town warrant committee? So $35,553,000, we're looking to carry over the State Fiscal Stabilization Fund money and apply that to recovery next year. The way the grant is written is that the money is for fiscal 10 and fiscal 11. They awarded us this money in the fall, sent us a notice that we could apply, we've applied, and the state just sent in its application for all the applications that it received to the federal government after the New Year. And we're told that the state should be getting its money from the federal government to pass on to us in late March, early April. So we started spending some of the money right down here with the staff hired with SF funds, and we used some of that money, we earmarked it for the cut that we took, so that we didn't cut any services that we planned to do this year with the state's money. So we hired a kindergarten teacher, we hired a third grade teacher, and we hired some classroom aides to offset some of the class size issues that we've had, and that amounts to about $237,000. We're using a round number there, we hired them mid-year, and we've had a little movement, so we're using that number. So we could carry forward $775,000 next year if we didn't spend any more of it. We put in a grant to spend it all, but we don't want to, we're being very conservative and cautious, just in case the federal government and the state somehow don't come through and deliver on their promise to give us these funds. So the next thing we would do is, at the moment, we're planning on carrying forward $775,000 over for next year. All the staff that we hired, that kindergarten teacher, the third grade teacher, and those class size, elementary class size aides, are not in the budget, per se, because we hired them after the start of this year, and they weren't initially funded, and we were paying for them through the grant. So the amount that we can carry over is $538,856, and that's the first number we put in up top to offset expenses for fiscal year 11. The four new teachers that I talked about would total $219,200. Yes, Mary?
Matt, can I just stop? Can we just get a highlight of what we actually intended to use the $538 for? Because when we sent down our application, we really wanted to utilize that for improving education this year and beyond.
Yeah. We intended to use that for a number of things. Some of the things that first come to mind, you know, when we thought we were going to get the money a lot earlier this year, we were going to use it for math coordinators and reading coordinators to adjust, to address the AYP issues at the elementary and middle school levels. We're also looking at tutors, we're looking at some software and professional developments. We could spend it on quite a few things that would address student achievement, to bring them up to level, because in theory, and often in practice, once you get a student up to grade level, it's much easier to keep them moving forward. So that's where the investment or reinvestment idea comes from, and that's what we were really hoping to do. The other half of the State Fiscal Stabilization Fund money is you can use it to recover jobs that you otherwise would have lost. So instead of being, for lack of a better way to say it, more proactive with the funds, the delay in actually getting them, and our budget picture for next year, we're being a little bit more reactive to try and keep as much as we have, because we have a good program, and we fund it well, it's just becoming very challenging to do.
And if I might, to Mrs. Kelly's point, when we wrote the grant, you were either restoring positions that you've lost, or you were looking ahead to achievement. And again, even with the override, when we went over our grant, restoring two math coaches at the elementary level. We have no math coaches, we had math coaches in the elementary schools. Restoring two remedial teachers in the Milton public schools. We had a parent come to Citizen speak on that very topic. At the high school, there's a need for a part-time coordinator for students, a liaison for students who want to do work-study. We do not have anyone in that position. And again, at the middle school, and when we get into the list, you'll see, because of the AYP issues at the Pierce and the progress they've made, and again, if I bring you back to the year that we were able to put in a teacher and a half to provide double math, double English for Pierce students who were at risk of failing MCAS, we've seen the direct results of those, that staffing decision and that, those additions, there were positions like that in the grant. But I think it's important for the public to know that we meet with the Finance Subcommittee, we meet with our leadership team, and these are really, really hard decisions. And as I said to the Finance Subcommittee, many districts, when they receive the stimulus money, and what I characterize as stimulus money is, for years, we've said that Milton wasn't properly funded from the state. And you can go online, and we'll put all this data on our web, and you'll see a neighboring community receive $35,000. And so this was to bring all of the districts back to foundation.
Right. The state, foundation has two pieces to it. There's a local funding portion and the state funding portion. And the state funding minimum, under the last revision to Chapter 70, is the state's supposed to fund 17.5% of the foundation budget. Now, what does foundation mean? Foundation, think of the analogy of a house. The foundation is the base that you build everything else on. The state says you have to have a base, minimum level of education, and it's a little bit different in each community because of ed reform in 1993, not everybody was at the same level. So what ed reform did was they gave everybody a base, the state put more money into education, and they raised that base for everybody. And Milton does fund above the base, but the state doesn't fund its share. And actually, next year will be the first year in a long time that the state is, I haven't gone back through all the years of the 90s to see what they were funding at. It'll be the first time, I think, this decade that they will have actually been meeting their share, and it'll be the fifth year of a five-year plan for Chapter 70. Now granted, that is the governor's budget, and we'll see what happens with the House and the Senate, is they will put their budgets out after, the governor's budget is always the starting process. But if he's optimistic about the numbers and they don't change it, it looks like we may actually get the state to fund Chapter 70 for the minimum level at a dollar amount that they're supposed to, 17.5% of foundation.
But to that point, with the grant this year, we were conservative, we discussed with Finance Subcommittee and our leadership team, and we didn't, again, as Ms. Kelly brought up at one of our meetings, that money would, we could have used that money this year, and it would have improved instruction and driven achievement. But again, we recognize the situation in the town, and we really, we really were conservative with that money. So the reason, when we have to go to level service budget, that number would have been much bigger if we weren't carrying over $538,000.
$38,000.
$538,000. So we're going to keep doing this?
Yep, just to echo Mary's sentiment, we were conservative on two levels. One, just in case, worst case, the state or the federal government didn't actually deliver the money and we spent it, it's very hard to unspend the money in June, you know. Working with $237,000 is about two-thirds, almost two-thirds of 1% in a $35 million budget. If we spent $1 million, we wouldn't be able to work our way out of that hole. That would be very painful going forward. So, and knowing that we had a challenge early on financially, we decided that, since the grant specified that we could carry money over, we decided that that might be the most prudent course of action. So, back to level four, just to recap, $35,533,000 budget, carrying over $538,000 to reduce that amount for what we'd have to pay for next year, four new teachers to maintain level service. We know we're not going to be able to do that, but at least we're not laying off those staff because we never actually got to hire them. Balance of projected fiscal 11, American Recovery and Reinvestment Act. It's another pocket of stimulus funds, and that is in regards to the gray box down the bottom there, John, ARIA IDEA, which is stimulus money for the Individuals with Disabilities Education Act. What the federal government did, and the states did with some of the stimulus money, was they already put it through federal grant programs that already existed, because that was the most efficient way to get the money out there. So in fiscal year 10, early on, they gave us $757,000. We started a new special ed program that Jeff Rubin had spoke to you about earlier in the year, and the balance of it, we used to backfill a circuit breaker shortfall. And circuit breaker is a state reimbursement program for high-cost, out-of-district special ed students. And what does that, what does that really mean? Well, I just talked to you about foundation, and circuit breaker operates that if the cost of the students' program is more than four times foundation, we use the round number of $9,000 for a base. If that number is more than $36,000, every dollar you spend after $36,000, the state will reimburse you. Traditionally, the state circuit breaker reimbursement program would be at around 70% to 75% funded. It got cut in half, we budgeted for a 75%, because that's what they had come in at the prior two years. It'd get basically cut in half, down to 38% or 40%, I can't remember off the top of my head at the moment. And we used that ARIA IDEA money, like the rest of the state, because most other folks had set their budgets well before the floor dropped out, to backfill that, so we could afford to pay our tuition bills and not have to cut other programs. So we did essentially the same thing again in FY11. We intend to keep the new special ed program that's keeping kids in district, and we're doing that for three main reasons. Educationally, we can provide the services very well. It's socially responsible and financially responsible. We want to keep the kids in the community, their parents usually want them to be here, and we can do it more efficiently and more effectively in-house. So for all the right reasons, we want to keep that program, and that's an investment that we hope to continue well after this grant money disappears. So then, again, not knowing for sure when we started the budget process, how much, or if we were going to get any of that IDEA in fiscal 11, because they didn't release that until mid-December, what we were actually going to get, we, I left that initially out of the budget, waiting to see if we were going to get it. And we are going to get $755,000 as opposed to the $757,000. So we're going to use $520,000 to offset the budget as well. So the first round of reductions, you know, we reduce a little bit, almost $1.3 million there, and we're at $34,255,000, and we need to get down to $32,976,000. So our cut that we would need to reduce is $1,279,000. And that's a working number. Things aren't finalized yet, but that's where we are today.
So, and to Matt Gillis's point, keep in mind that those two stimulus packages are for next year. So right now, we're saying to the public, we're saying to the warrant committee, that the Milton public schools have to cut $1,279,000 to get to, if they give us the same dollar amount that they gave us last year. But we're only, we have to cut that. That is a tremendous, that's a huge number. We're going to show you what it means and what we're going to have to cut to get to that level funded amount, if in fact, that's what we have to do, if we can't get the budget that we submitted. But keep in mind, if we didn't have those two stimulus packages, the number would be what? Double. And again, that money that we're using for next year is only money for next year. It's been very clear, this is 10 and 11 money. But we're using it, and we're using it cost efficiently, and we're watching every single dime. So now, we had the charge from the warrant committee and the Finance Subcommittee to tell the warrant committee what the Milton public schools will look like, how will the leadership team reduce $1.279 million in the Milton public schools? So as I said, we met as a leadership team, we met with the Finance Subcommittee again and again and again, and we're going to present the plan that we have for you now. Now, for those of you who have watched this before, we have gone through this before, and as Matt Gillis said, this is an organization. And again, you have 4,000 children, who every year their needs change. And so you'll remember years ago, when we had to make these kind of cuts, we, one year we were going to cut sports and activities, and we were going to run bell to bell and cut all activities that didn't happen in the classroom. Last year, when we were going to have to make the cuts, we went through a difficult year, talking about cutting, closing the Tucker School, or then reorganizing the French Immersion Program. And so, we sat down as a leadership team, and to Mrs. Kelly's point, our first priority was the teacher in the classroom in front of the students. That was our first priority. And so when you see the list that we've come up with, the reductions, this was difficult work. I said today, after I sat down with each individual who's going to be listed on this cut list, reduction list tonight, this, I love my job, but this was today, the worst day, and again, last year when I had to sit down with people. People have lives, and people are vested in the Milton public schools, and after sitting down with these people, this was life-changing for them today. And I said to the leadership team, it's going to be life-changing for the people around them, because I work with Matt, and Matt's been notified that he's not going to be here next year, and again, there are, you know, if Matt was hypothetically one of the people that was going to be let go.
You didn't know that, did you, Matt? That was news to me, so I had to turn away.
We have teachers, and one of, one of the teachers has been let, is going to be let go. Again, it has an impact on a team, it has on a grade, on a school, and to say nothing of the individuals who, you know, tonight left the Milton public schools, knowing the possibility that their, their positions were going to be eliminated. And for the public and for the system to know that then there were all sorts of, and the contract bumping levels that we have to go through. Tomorrow, I'll meet with the staff in two different meetings after school to detail these cuts, to answer all their questions. All the material we're going to present tonight, Matt Gillis's presentation and mine, will be on the web as of tomorrow afternoon, and no question is too small, and if any resident, any parent has a question, we encourage them to contact us. So we're going to go over our reduction cut list with you now, list now, and I would invite John Phelan, Matt Gillis, or any school committee member, Finance Subcommittee member, if you want to sit right down there. At Milton High School, we've divided the reductions with middle, elementary, middle, high, and system-wide. And again, I bring you back to, we prioritize the teacher in front of the classroom. But when you had to get to 24.4 FTEs of full-time positions, that is a huge, that is a very, very large number of positions to eliminate. The first position will be the Director of Guidance. That is a 1.0, that position will be eliminated, and I'm not going to read you the detail, but in response to the Finance Subcommittee, we have worked with the principals at to the Finance Subcommittee, we've worked with the principals at each of the buildings to give impact statements. Again, all of the duties from the Director of Guidance are going to have to be assigned. The leadership responsibilities will have to be assumed by the principal and the two vice principals. The caseload that the Guidance Director now has will have to be redistributed to the other Guidance Counselors, and again, this will have an impact on the time Guidance Counselors spend with each student in terms of course selection, student goals, and ultimately college selection process. The second cut, or reduction at the high school, is going to be a one-point-oh teacher in the Family and Consumer Studies Department. Again, this, there are three individuals in this department. I would bring you back to when we had one teacher for Wood, and we had one teacher for Otto. Highly enrolled courses, you heard Jay Rosenberg tonight, and we had to eliminate, and we have one teacher who shares the responsibility of Wood and Otto. The, at this time, the, we believe the, in the ref list, the teacher who teaches cooking will be eliminated, and the teacher who teaches sewing will divide her schedule between those two areas. So that's two-point-oh at the high school positions eliminated. Now, the detail, you see that that totals one-hundred-and-sixty-six thousand dollars, with detailed, Matt Gillis and John Phelan have put a tremendous amount of work into detailing the exact amount that each one of these cuts and reductions. So I will analogize to you that if somebody's let go, or they might have seniority rights, they actually went to the teacher who's going to be let go, so every cent has been accounted for. Moving to PS Middle School, enter in at any time. Again, with the PS Middle School and the AYP status that it is for restructuring, we only cut one classroom teacher, one core classroom teacher, and this is really based on student enrollment. So in the area of social studies, working with James Jet, he believes that he is able at grades seven and eight, based on class size, to eliminate one core teacher and to have the social studies teacher cross over grade levels. You heard tonight, with this AYP issue, we deal in math and language arts and the science, you can have only so many students in a science class with the stations, so it was the social studies teacher that is going to be eliminated at PS. At the PS Middle School, we're eliminating, you remember, the PS Middle School had two assistant principals last year, again, centering on the curriculum model and putting our emphasis on curriculum administrators. We reduced the support there to one-point-five assistant principals. The model has worked, from the point of view of the leadership, the teachers, the students, the results, the assessments that we're seeing, so we're going to, again, make another reduction there, staying away from the classroom, one-point-oh assistant principal at the PS school. The responsibilities for that administration will be absorbed by the Principal James Jet and the Guidance Counselors, and again, it will make a difference, obviously, in parent communication, interaction with students, and again, working with the middle school student, but we stayed away from the classroom at the PS Middle School. Moving on to the elementary schools, as you remember, when we broke the number five-fifty, we have four elementary school, five-fifty, we put a half-time assistant principal at the Glover School, we're going to eliminate that position. Again, you see that assistant principal at the Glover School giving more than that-point-five position, interacting with students, bus duty, lunch duty, parent communication, that position's going to be eliminated, and those duties will be assumed by the principal, who's also responsible for the instruction in the building, all of the students, the teacher evaluation. Again, we centered on the teacher in front of the students, preserving the teacher in front of the Milton Public School students. Elementary specialist, working on this area, we talked about, we added back, if you remember, in exchange, we increased the music program at the elementary. We also have a future problem-solving program, and so what we're going to do during the coming weeks is, in our projections, we have to make sure that we meet the teacher contract, and with the, again, the time that they need for planning within their contract, so we've not specified which area that will be, but there'll be detail coming out on that. We've spoken to the World Language Committee, John Phelan, Gracie Burke, chairing that committee, Kristen Bagley-Jones, your representative on the committee. They're working very, very hard. Again, stacks of homework, discussions, two-hour meetings, and again, we've given them the charge. If you remember last year, we talked about reorganizing the French Immersion Program. We've really given them, through all the different options, that they're evaluating the World Language Program at the elementary school, to come up with a savings of at least two-point-oh teachers. And that's looking at enrollment, and so when, next week, we talk to the first-grade parents, I'm going to explain to the first-grade parents that we want to explain the English program, we want to explain the French program. Many people didn't want us to have the information night until decisions were made, but I'm going to explain to the parents, we're here, there are many parents who don't understand the two programs, it'll be a valuable evening, and then we'll bring them back together when we find out, again, questions, there are questions that run the range from where the French Immersion Program is going to be located, they're evaluating capping the program, they're evaluating the partner schools, they're evaluating cross-grade level classes, and so there are a number of options that are going to be, come out of this committee, recommended to me, and I'll work with the school committee on deciding what we're going to implement and what changes they'll be. But the charge was two-point-oh classroom teachers. Full-day kindergarten, the district anticipates, the full-day kindergarten student enrollment will be smaller, and that we're going to be able to save one kindergarten teacher here. Again, after our information night Thursday, we think we're actually asking parents to informally sign up for full-day, half-day program. Again, I don't think that there's a more successful full-day kindergarten program in the state of Massachusetts. The response has been phenomenal from parents and teachers and administrators, but we're looking for, again, we use the NESTECK enrollment projections, we can put those out on the web. Mr. Gillis did his own formula, and both indicate, based on the births five years ago, that, and tracing the progress and the success over the last two years, that we'll be able to reduce one full-day kindergarten teacher. In the next area, language-based program, and when we've gone all over our special ed programs, we have a language-based program at the Colicott School, and again, based on the needs of the children, and how many children have, again, that program model in their IEPs, and the number of children who are at the fifth grade, moving on to the sixth grade, we believe at this time, that there are currently three teachers in the language-based program at the Colicott. We believe that we'll be able to reduce that program by one teacher and provide the same level of service, the same teacher-student ratio that we have. And this is, in our field, we call it aging out. Often you say, how many children who are on IEPs and private placements might be aging out after the age of eighteen or twenty-one? Again, this is based on the IEPs we know now, and again, with this preschool program that's all-inclusive, we have a better understanding of the numbers and the needs of the students entering the public elementary schools. Again, looking at first estimates, we believe that we'll be able to reduce a point-five preschool teacher with keeping with the same teacher-student ratio that we have now. Again, this is from the preliminary numbers that are coming forward on student enrollment in the preschool. ACE, we have an art enrichment program that runs for half a year for fifth graders that also is going to be eliminated in this list of cuts that totals twenty-four-point-four positions. Moving on from the elementary.
Zip page down.
System-wide, we have, in, if, for the public to know, we have this full-day kindergarten program, and we were so fortunate, again, I say we're the most fortunate residents in the state of Massachusetts, that the last year that the full-day kindergarten program was granted, was, grants were approved with the state, we submitted our grant, and so that we receive a partial grant for every full-day kindergarten class. Our commitment, from the charge of the school committee, was to charge a tuition that fully funds. We would run a half-day program. So with the grant we have and the tuition, we committed to the school committee, and we can provide anyone who wants the documentation that to go to full-day, between the grant and the tuition, it's fully funded. The aides have been full-time in the full-day kindergarten program. Those aides are going to be reduced to half-time aides. So, that's going to bring about a cut of seven-point-one FTEs in that area. Again, if we had all the detail, you would see that the salary of an aide is not the salary of a teacher, but detailing every one of these positions, connecting them, associating them with actual people, this is how we got to the number to bring back our budget number to level service.
So is this the way you're presenting the kindergarten program to parents?
Yes.
Regardless of what happens with our budget, it will be a half-time aide? Is that...
Yes. We have a data systems specialist in the Milton Public Schools, we're going to, who, and that person, again, every student in the Milton Public School, every student in the public schools of Massachusetts, every teacher is identified by numbers, tracked through the public school system, right down to their MCAS scores are associated with their name and their number. This is a tremendous amount of work, their attendance, their discipline records are associated with, again, tracking them through the system. We're going to reduce this position by point-five, and again, central office staff will have to assume those duties. I would tell you that this person is working full-time, every day, all day. So none of these cuts or reductions is someone who isn't working full-day, all day in the Milton Public Schools, giving more than a hundred percent to the children and the citizens and the town. Classroom aides, again, working with the leadership team, and again, honoring every IEP, but looking at projecting the ed plans through next year. We believe that we're going to be able to eliminate five classroom aides. This is a very volatile area. Again, ed plans are written all through the year, and the number can change, but we estimate, again, working with the sped staff, that we can make that cut next year and honor every IEP that's been written, and looking ahead, we provided for a projected number. Professional development. I believe, I believe that NA...
The NA is just for FTE, we're not cutting any staff. We're cutting the development services and offerings for teachers to get recertified.
And I think that that, we had an estimated total on that, so we have to check that number, all right?
Fifty thousand.
It was fifty thousand dollars.
Fifty-five thousand.
Fifty thousand dollars.
That's reflected in the subtotal.
It's reflected in the subtotal. So we'll take care of that. The ELE, English as, English, well, it was ELL, English Language Learners, English as a Second Language. When students, Mr. Hugh Bean referred to students coming in from Haiti, when students, parents register students in the public schools of Massachusetts, they fill out a survey, and they can identify that English is not their native language. And immediately, that initiates the ELE-certified personnel within the Milton Public Schools to administer a test to those children. And again, by law, we have to provide so many sessions a week for the children, and we have to quarterly test those children. Mary Duggan, who is the guidance person at the Glover School, is ELE-certified, and we pay her a stipend to coordinate that program in Milton, working with the three part-time people that work in the Milton Public Schools, providing those services. Again, based on the results from the testing, how many sessions a week, and then continually checking in, assessing those students, and doing an annual assessment for when those children are able to, again, be totally integrated into the program and not need ELE services. We believe, again, projecting ahead, leaving some room for students moving into the Milton Public Schools, that we're going to be able to reduce the, one of our ELE positions from point-eight, reduction from point-eight to point-two, so that is a reduction of a point-six position. We have a registrar in the Milton Public Schools that we've been talking to you about in the last few weeks, and that we think by setting up that stipend position we told you about, and remodeling how we're registering students, new students into the Milton Public Schools, that we're going to make a reduction there of point-five and reduce the register. Again, many of these positions are going to have to be assigned to other individuals who work as already full-time, but again, the charge was twenty-four-point-four positions, and as you can see, we prioritize the teacher in front of the students.
Ms. Gormley, will you be restricting the hours that someone can register their child at the Milton Public Schools, since that person, the registrar, will only be half-time?
I haven't really gone that far to consider that, but that absolutely could be a possibility by, with this reduction. Mr. Phelan?
Yes, I believe it would restrict the hours in which people could drop off their enrollment packets. The enrollment packets are available on the web. Parents who move in the community or are new to the Milton Public Schools can download that and fill it out. They can call Denise Kelly and make an appointment to come in and see her. We haven't determined what her hours would be next year, but she will be accessible five days a week. It will be half-time, she is five days a week full-time now. I do believe that this amount of time will provide our families and our parents enough of a window to provide the documentation to the school and enroll their children efficiently.
Thank you.
If I might go back to that NA on professional development, again, that's not going to be an FTE for the public, and so, again, the amount of money that would have been in the next column would have been fifty, fifty-five thousand dollars we're cutting in professional development. Again, a direct impact on the work that we do with our teachers. Moving down in this highlighted area in blue, again, we're going to take four-point-five of our lunch aides, and they're paid for in the Milton Public School budget, and we're going to transfer them to the revolving account through our food service program. Do you want to address that for a moment? Mr. Gillis?
Sure. The food service aides do exactly what you think they do. They assist the kids in the cafeteria at the elementary level, and really kind of help them from making a mess or keeping a food fight from breaking out. And it's necessary to have some supervision in the cafeteria. And this is one area where we feel, since our food service program is really one of the best in the state, it is, in the simplest terms, profitable, we usually have some money left over at the end of the year, that they could absorb this expense. And we've been reviewing the food service regulations, and if for some reason it's not advisable to reclassify the luncher maids, technically, we can charge back more of the custodian time that's actually spent cleaning the cafeteria and the kitchen area. So we're very confident we can make the cut that's associated with that. And the other thing, our full-day K program with the tuition, we're now in the second year of the program, and the tuition collection is going pretty well. Most of our, most of our folks are paying their bills, you know, we may have to nudge a few people on occasion, but we're very confident that we can, we can take one whole teacher and charge it back to that program and still be within half the cost of the program. So we're taking that person that's in the budget and putting them right into the full-day K revolving fund, and we shouldn't have a problem there. And I'll turn it back over to Mary.
And that one-point-oh, you'd really, is really two part-time people, because remember, the full-day kindergarten grant pays for the additional... Because remember, the full-day kindergarten grant pays for the additional half-day. So if we wanted to delineate that 1.0, it's really two half-time positions that we're going to move into the full-day kindergarten grant. Electricity reduction...
Ms. Gormly. Just to make a note of that, the reason these are in blue, 4.5 and the 1.0, those aren't cuts, those are reassignments. So that 5.5 is not included in our total of positions lost. Those are not positions lost, they're just reclassified as to their source of funding. So when we say there are so many positions lost, those aren't part of them. That's excluding those.
And you know what we should do to Mr. Pavlichek's point before we put this? You have them asterisked, perhaps at the bottom we'll say that these are not reflected in the 24.4 positions.
The 4.5, though, is that reflective of all lunch aides? Because lunch aides are part-time positions, the 4.5 is reflective of more than one individual?
Yeah, there's three lunch aides at each school. And they're there three hours a day. And that works out to be four and a half full-time equipment.
Good point. Electricity reduction, as you remember, last year, Paul Hilton, our Assistant Superintendent for Business and many school committee members, we spent a tremendous amount of time working with a company that's nationally recognized on electricity reductions and savings. And that really educated all of us with the size and the square footage that we have in these buildings and the new buildings, the kinds of savings that really are out there. And so Ms. Sheridan and Mr. Gillis serve in a committee with citizens and Bill Ritchie, our facilities coordinator. And they believe that we're going to be able to, by setting a new policy on usage in each building that we'll share with you at another meeting after we've shared it with the teachers, that there's going to be a $75,000 savings. And again, finance subcommittee has looked at Mr. Gillis. Again, these have to be real dollars. These have to be real dollars to, if we are asked to, if, again, we have been given this charge, what would the Milton Public Schools look like if we received the same number of dollars? And so we have to, again, be able to live with every one of these cuts if in fact we're not fully funded. And in the documentation I gave you, I said that I believe that every Milton Public School student deserves a fully-funded Milton Public School program. And so these reductions are going to have a profound and negative impact on student achievement. Again, we tried to stay away from the teacher in front of the students. But again, 24.4 positions eliminated from the Milton Public Schools is a huge number. Again, after the electricity reduction, our support staff, you've worked with us, and that would be one FTE custodian. And so right now, our custodians are working to maximum in each one of our buildings. I think the response that you, walking through the buildings, that we get from parents, the pride I take in every one of our schools and the condition that our custodians and the pride they take in, from the hallways to the lavatories to the libraries, again, this will have a huge impact, one, the elimination of one position. So the total reductions, total $1,287,909. And again, that's very close to the number that we've been given. As Mr. Gillis said, if we look at FTEs and actual salaries, we're right within the number that was been assigned to make the cuts. And again, the total FTE, the elimination of 24.4 positions, actual people who are working today in the Milton Public Schools. Now, you have to remember, that's 24.4 positions with the additional money from professional development, the savings from electricity, reclassifying the aides and the kindergarten teacher.
And over a million dollars' worth of stimulus funds.
And that is a huge area...
Which if you were to add that on the end...
It would double at two and a half the number of... If we didn't have that stimulus, again, the sped stimulus funds and the stimulus funds, which again, everyone has to remember, and that's, those are our discussions in our finance subcommittee, again, what this does for us long-term in fiscal year 12.
I just want to say, I think that's worth reiterating, that not only are we putting over a million dollars' worth of stimulus money in here, but this is one-time money and that will impact. I mean, it's a huge benefit to us this year, but it puts us even deeper next year. Any questions? I would like to just make one comment here. As you can see stamped on every single page, this is a working document. This is countless hours, sleepless nights of this administration with a great deal of input from our finance subcommittee. But this is a working document and we do look forward to an open budget hearing on March 16th, where members of the community and the public can come and give us their input as well. So I just wanted to lift up that date.
And so again, we'll be presenting to full staff tomorrow afternoon in two different meetings. We met with each of the individuals impacted today. And we'll put all of this information as of tomorrow afternoon on the web. We'll take any questions, comments, suggestions that the public, parents, or the staff or the school committees.
Ms. Bagley-Jones?
To echo what Lyndale Lee said, I think it's amazing the amount of work that you guys have all done, the finance subcommittee and the staff. And it is incredibly depressing to sit here and listen. So please don't be offended by that, but it is incredibly depressing. And my heart goes out to the folks who had to tell. I know what that's like and it's a really tough situation to be in. What's the timeline on this? Could you explain, you know, this is a level-funded budget. It goes to the next step outside of Milton Public Schools is. And when is that? Because I'm not sure if that's really clear to Peter.
Good point.
So, so actually, we would want to vote of this cut list to be sent along to the warrant committee, to present to the warrant committee as what the impact of a level dollar budget would be on the Milton Public Schools next year. In addition to various backup materials that we're putting together in a packet that we would send along to the warrant committee as well. And their deadline for that is the end of this month. So this being the last meeting... Right, the end of the week, exactly. That would be the next process. Then the warrant committee, and maybe Glenn, you could speak to this. But the school subcommittee will review the material and then make a presentation, have discussions back and forth with the full warrant committee, who will then take a look at the monetary picture of the overall town budget as that goes through its process, having heard from the governor thus far, but still waiting for the House and the Senate to see where the final, you know, where we think the final number for Milton's budget will be. And there are a whole bunch of moving parts along with that.
And if I might just, to Mrs. Kelly's point, we've been working on this reduction list and the warrant committee asked us. And I didn't really want to share the reduction list. But Ms. Kelly and the finance subcommittee, they're correct. It's the beginning of February and again, these, we hope that we're, given the dollars we need to run the Milton Public Schools, the budget we requested. And somewhere between that budget, as we said, we've already recognized that we won't be adding new teachers, and a level service budget. And again, Mr. Pavlichek spoke to during different stages the possibility of even below level funded. And again, we had, these people had a right to know. Again, this is their lives. Several of the people on that list have given their lives to Milton Public Schools and they give their lives to the children. And one teacher joined us here tonight who has only been with us a year. And he came here tonight with his children to see the presentation. And so these cuts are real. And, you know, what we're looking for is a fully-funded Milton Public School budget. But we're asked by the warrant committee, what would the Milton Public Schools look like if you received the same number of dollars you did last year?
Mr. Pavlichek?
In the warrant committee's deliberations, of course, they've been working based on very scant revenue projections. They've had to make estimates of where state revenue might come in. Local revenue is fairly easy to estimate because it frankly is fairly small. You can't go too far wrong with your estimates on local revenue. But the biggest issue is the state. They had been planning a budget based on the possibility of state revenues actually decreasing to the town for fiscal 11 versus fiscal 10. And that's where the notion of less than level dollar funding was coming in. If state revenues stay roughly flat to the town, then probably the, their projection is that budgets would remain roughly flat within the town. The governor's pre-budget, I mean, we've only seen part of the governor's budget. The first initial press releases indicate that he wants to fully fund the foundation budget in the town, which would actually mean an increase in local aid to Milton. It would wrap the stimulus, the non-special ed stimulus money into the Chapter 70. Where that to happen, you're now looking at the situation where the town may get a little more than zero from the state. But they're still, you know, very much out there. We don't, we haven't seen, the governor's budget, House Two will be released tomorrow. We don't know yet what he's projecting for circuit breaker. It is interesting that one of the mid-year cuts he was talking about was a cut to the payment of low taxes money, but the budget restores that for fiscal 11. So it's not clear where all the numbers are falling in yet. We'll have an idea of the governor's budget tomorrow. If the last couple of years are any indicator, probably the governor's budget is sort of the best-case scenario. And the House and Senate will creep down a little bit from that. But this, certainly the concept of a zero, zero increase over this current year is in the ballpark. We're, that's the neighborhood we're working in. Will we get exactly zero? Maybe we'll get a little more, maybe we'll get a, you know, in a good scenario, we might get a few hundred thousand dollars above this year's. But it's the rough ballpark we're looking in. And so it's, and these cuts, you know, as we say, not written in stone, but certainly it's the, it's a reasonable approximation of the kind of budget we're likely to have for next year. And it's just going to play out over the next two months as the, as the House and Senate weigh in. To get to your, to finish your point, the warrant committee will, in the middle of March, have their all-day meeting where they will actually draft the warrant for the town, for the May town meeting. And even then, it's subject to revision after that, but it just won't be in print, any revisions they make. And this will all become real one way or the other in the first and second week of May, when the town meeting votes it. That's when it becomes the actual budget. It will be, as I say, in play until then. But over the next, really till the end of March, till the House and Senate start to weigh in with their budgets, we'll have a better idea of where we're actually likely to come out.
Mr. Hugh Bann?
I'd just like to make a motion that we submit these proposed reductions to the warrant committee as an impact statement of a level-funded budget for FY11.
Second that.
Any discussion about this? Mrs. Kelly?
I would just ask that some of the verbiage be enhanced a little bit. And I can go over that with you if you like. And maybe just some of the formatting, so that it ends on pages and stuff. But basically, the crux of the matter, yes.
Some and substance is not going to change.
And so we're going to hold that. I would ask all the school committee members, we're holding that before we put it on the web till tomorrow at 4:00 or 5:00. So I'd really appreciate any suggestions you had to detail our enhancements of formatting.
Any other discussions? All in favor? Thank you, it's unanimous. Mrs. Kelly?
Can I just go back to one point that Mr. Pavlichek was making, regarding the governor's budget increasing Chapter 70 but utilizing the stimulus funds, is that correct?
It's not using stimulus funds, actually. What happened with the, the state fiscal stimulus funds, the non-special ed funds this year, is they were used to bring the districts, as was mentioned before, up to foundation minimum, which was a requirement for the state to get the money. They had to bring the states up to foundation minimum. The governor's budget for next year proposes continuing funding the districts at foundation minimum, which basically is a $1.1 million addition to our Chapter 70 funds for the town. Because it basically rolls that part of the stimulus onto the base, if you will. Now, of course, there's pluses and minuses to that. Plus is the town gets a million one. Minus is it goes to the general fund, it doesn't go directly to the schools. That doesn't mean the schools will get a million one, all right? It means the town will get a million one, it'll be parceled out over the town's budget. So, you know, the way cuts have been going, we've been taking about 63% of the cuts. You know, maybe we'll get 63%. I don't, we don't know. That's for warrant committee and town meeting to work out. But if that were to stay and all other things were to be equal, we'd be in a better position next year, vis-à-vis state aid, anyway. But again, we don't know whether, you know, we're still looking at drastically reduced, drastically reduced circuit breaker. We don't know whether we're looking at any number of things that haven't appeared in the pre-budget press releases yet. So it'll be tomorrow afternoon when we finally get a copy of House Two and can start crawling through it to see what really is out there. And we don't know frankly, even though the House, Senate, and the governor all use the same revenue estimates, because they've, the consensus revenue estimates are out as of, as of late December. We don't know, for instance, if the governor is anticipating some other one-time revenues that he's built into the budget or something. We just, you know, not having the document, it's impossible to tell what's in it just yet. So, I mean, preliminary indications are, I won't say good, let's say interesting. But, you know, as I say, this is, the governor's budget for the last couple of years has been the best-case scenario. So caution people not to get their hopes up too high too fast. It is what it is.
Well, I think, Glenn, it's really helpful that we have you here to share all this wealth of information because it certainly is a very complicated process. And we're so lucky that you have such a good handle on it. So thank you for that. Mrs. Kelly, did you want...
So I believe we have a finance subcommittee meeting scheduled for this Friday morning, at which we will perhaps review the final draft of this document, as well as any of the backup documentation that we'll be sending on to the warrant committee.
Exactly.
So if I could ask, if the administration could just send out a preliminary outline as to what data would be included in that so that at least the members could review it? And if you're not able to make a Friday meeting and you would like something added, that you could send that into BEV?
And to that point, Mrs. Kelly, Mr. Gillis believes that by tomorrow night, he'll have the packet done. And so we probably can't get a copy done out to everyone, but we can give an outline. And then if anyone can identify anything that they think might be valuable to the warrant committee, we'll add it.
Great. Thank you. Well, I would just like to reiterate a huge thank you to the administration for the countless hours, the late nights, I think Mr. Gillis was here, to the wee hours of the morning over the weekend. And I know how much time and energy and angst has gone into this process. Unfortunately, we have to go through this process. But I would also like to say they were working very collaboratively with the warrant committee and the town. And I'm, you know, hopeful.
And to that point, Ms. Sheridan, that I want to speak on behalf of the school system, that we're partners with the school committee and the finance subcommittee. And again, we listen to their input. They represent the parents and the citizens. And it's a team approach to this. And they've been invaluable in the process to Mr. Gillis, Mr. Phelan, and myself, and to the principals. It's hard work.
Thank you. Okay, any old business items? Next meeting agenda items? So we'll push off, oh no, our next meeting, I'm talking about, I was thinking about the end of February meeting. But perhaps we can ask Ms. Holly Concanon, as I had said, that would be a next agenda item. Anything further? I'd like to thank the students who were here tonight. And I would entertain a motion to adjourn to executive session for the purpose of contract negotiations, but not to return to public session, but adjourn from executive session.
Second?
And this will be done by a roll call? Mrs. Kelly?
Yes.
Ms. Bagley-Jones? I mean, yes. Mr. Pavlichek?
Yes.
Mr. Hugh Bann? Thank you. Thank you and good night. Thank you, Cable.